So, call to order the Policy Resolution and Legislation Committee. Our first item is approval of the minutes from October 14th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
First and the second questions, adjustments, comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, legislative updates. Three items that I thought were noteworthy here. The first was, it's kind of a continuation of a discussion we had last time regarding the temporary, not temporary, but extending licensure to different groups of people. And this one has to do with, the DPI finalized a permanent rule that creates a license pathway for educators who are spouses of military personnel. So converting what had been a temporary emergency regulation into a permanent rule, DPI has established conditions in which spouse of active-duty military personnel may obtain a Tier II educator license in Wisconsin. The two qualifications are, the applicant holds a valid teacher, pupil service, or administrator license from another state, and the applicant can provide verification of the applicant's spouse currently, current military orders, and a copy of either their marriage license or their military ID card. So, another opportunity to help with the shortage of educators.
Because they move so often that being licensed in all these different states is a hardship.
I assume, yeah, it must be. So, yeah.
Makes sense.
It seems logical and strange that it hadn't happened before, but one of those things, right? All right, the second one, I thought was interesting, just given the social implications of this going on right now. And it was really recognition by the WASB group of thanking the Albany School Board President Steve Elliott, who testified at a public hearing regarding a bill that was in support of raising the smoking age to 21, for smoking and vaping. And I hadn't thought about that connection personally between school board duties and something such as that, but when I start thinking about the stories that I hear of kids in school vaping and doing all this stuff, it was, I thought it was just noteworthy to bring here. And it says, "While Steve's Board has not taken an official position on the bill, and he was testifying as an individual, he did provide legislators with a valuable perspective on the bill from a school board member. They also, legislators also heard testimony from several school principals during the hearing, and now have a much better idea of the impacts this bill will have on keeping tobacco, nicotine, and vaping products out of schools and out of the hands of young students." And there was some more commentary around this. I guess I hadn't realized how many of these things or devices, they say, are disguised as like, school utensils, for lack of a better word.
USB drive, it looks like a USB drive.
Yeah, maybe that's what it was. And I, when I had seen this, I asked my kids about it, I'm like, okay, so what am I, what am I missing? Should I be looking in your backpack here for something that?
Shirt, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
They told you right away.
And they looked at me, they're like, well, yeah, you don't realize this? I'm like, no, what are you talking about? They're like, oh yeah, you know, this is a vape, and this is a jewel, and this is a god knows what. And I was a little disturbed that they knew all the details of this, but then we got past it. Apparently, it's just from osmosis, because I guess it's fairly prevalent. And interestingly enough, today, I just read an article in my day job, there have been 39 confirmed deaths now from vaping, and obviously thousands of injuries. They do think they have a link now on a connection to the physical issues, has to do with a vitamin E subset or something like that, that's reacting in the respiratory system. But nonetheless, you know, obviously, anything we can do to keep it out, the better. So, that was, that was it on that one. And then, the last week of October, the Senate Education Committee had been reviewing and voting on a number of items. They didn't provide a ton of detail on these, so I don't know if we hid, or if anyone here has more information on it, but there's a parental choice program, equalization aid, charter education, suicide prevention grants, timing of equalization aid payments to districts, special ed licensure, and feasibility studies for consolidation of grades or grade sharing. So, I don't know if anyone has any insight on.
It's a broad list.
Yeah. Yeah, it really ran the gamut. All right. That was it. Any other comments, additions, legislative things of note? Okay, then we will move on to public and student comment.
Nothing.
We have nothing. Let's move to item five, then, our NEOLA policies for review.
Right, I will start that conversation. So you can see in the, in the doc, we have the full list of draft policies, all the series. We have the overview of the board questions, suggestions, comments, and the reactions to those, and a couple of newer policies that we didn't get on, but the board members had questions about. Before we get to those, I do want to introduce Mr. Tim Bannack, who's here. He is our NEOLA representative. And, yep, and...
So he's who we have to thank for all this stuff.
Exactly, yeah.
Trying to verify.
Do you all have your tomatoes? No, I'm sorry.
Fun times.
It's all good.
Excuses, excuses. And so, you know, Tim is going to be our representative, you know, at least twice a year, we'll see him, or at least will see him, you know, we'll work out the process. But I wonder, Tim, do you want to maybe talk a little bit about, you know, like, we had pulled up a resolution, you want to kind of speak to, you know, the process moving forward, and any, any info you think the board might want to hear?
Certainly. First of all, I need you that are veterans, happy Veterans Day, and my hand's off to all of you, if you are through your service for our country, to our country. So yes, with the NEOLA policy service, you have worked very, very hard as a board and as administrative staff to look at these templates that we have, compare them with your current policies, and then also try to figure out what's best for Wausau, the Wausau School District. And as Dr. Hiltz has explained to me, the process that you went through, it appears you certainly took this as a very serious and challenging endeavor, and did some wonderful work. So what happens next is that you will have a resolution, which I provided a template for the district, which you could use. If you would like a different version, you certainly can do that. But we did provide a sample adoption resolution, which essentially does two things in one resolution. It will accept or adopt the new policies, and at the same time or simultaneously, it will rescind the current policies that you have. So in one stroke, or one adoption, you can have all of that done at once. So that would be the legal matter that you would have to take place, and once that is done, then those new policies will become the law of the school district, so to speak. Then, starting in January, we expect that our first update, policy update, will be coming out. So I will likely be calling Dr. Hiltz to set up an appointment sometime in late January through, could be even April, to go over usually 35 to 45 different policies that our school attorneys have found need some updating. And then, we will then take the new language, merge that with your current active language, and then there will be some decisions to be made, because our school attorneys will actually put parentheses where there will be options. So just like you did in the drafting process, you'll put an X for those options that you would want, for that language that you do not choose, we would straight through. And typically, school districts will have the superintendent and myself, and it could be a board member, it could be anybody else, doesn't have to be anybody else, but when we're done with our meeting, which is usually about two hours, then, in board docs, there will be a recommendation of all those different options that will be coming to you. And then, of course, you have that opportunity to debate that and decide whether or not you want to take those recommendations, or if you'd like to make changes. And then, typically, you have a first reading, and a second reading, which would lead to a formal adoption process of those changes. And that cycle would repeat itself in another six months. So every six months, we meet, we meaning the NEOLA associates, we meet our school attorneys, they tell us what they have found when they scour the different state and federal laws, and then there are recommendations that are made, and they then put it in draft form and send it out to us, and it goes back and forth several times, it's a process for us too. And then finally, we contact our school districts, who are clients of NEOLA, and we say, okay, the next update is ready, it's being released on such and such a date, and here's how you can find it. And then shortly thereafter, I would be contacting the school district to set up an appointment. Any questions on the policy cycle, once you are done with the formal adoption resolution, and then how the updates proceed after?
Tim, do you mind if I just, so we had spoken last week at our workshop, that the timeline was going to be in a final review tonight, and like, a special meeting on November 25th, right, to do the changeover. After further consideration of that, and looking at the 885 pages of policies, I just thought it'd be prudent, there is no rush, knowing that the next update doesn't come out till January, February, March-ish, that we'll just approve, if it's okay with the board, we'll just approve, do the official changeover on December 9th at a regular meeting, as we would normally. So then, November 25th is just a regular old ed ops meeting. Is that agreeable?
It works.
Okay. And Cassie, did you want to pull up that resolution that Tim was referring to, just so you can, not sure what that was. Did it disappear?
There is an adoption resolution template that also has lines on it for school board member signatures. If you would like to take that signed document of the resolution, you could actually put that into your policy, your active policy site, so that anyone from the public that is going in to look at your policies could see, okay, here's the adoption resolution that the board went through in a formal approval process, and the actual individual members who signed off on it. So that's something that would be your option, as far as having that there nestled with the policies. The Clintonville School District is one of the latest clients, and I worked with that, liked that idea, and they have that, so we were going to just share that with you, so you can see what that looks like.
You don't remember where we found that, do you? It wasn't under, oh no, it was under board, wasn't it?
We did a search with policies.
Well, that's, thank you.
At least it's intuitive for the public. Can't find it.
Shoot they want.
You think you'd want that from the center?
Is this a good time to ask a question? When you have this resolution where you're accepting the new, and then you're deleting the old at the same time, what happens when things don't match up? Like, if we have a policy that there isn't a counterpart for in NEOLA, do you have to make sure you consider that ahead of time? And how do you assign a number to that, if you decide as a district to keep it?
I think we have that already, Cassie, I think you were talking about that earlier, that there are some policies marked as TBD, to be determined, in terms of a number being assigned to it from the NEOLA Production Office.
Okay.
There is a sense of strategy, so to speak, and order with the numbering system.
Okay.
So, we don't allow clients to make their own numbers, but you can make whatever policy content that you would like, and you could even change the titles from what we have as a title, so.
And then you assign it a number for us?
Correct. So, getting back to your initial question, we would just copy and paste your current policy onto an empty template, and then we would ask the Production Office to assign a number to it.
Perfect, okay.
And I believe that's in, in the...
We have five to be determined. We transferred over the library selection policy, which was 6215. The only thing I left off was the appendixes.
Okay.
So that is already in there. And then we brought over the music selection policy, or I can't remember what number that was, and also the trademark licensing policy. And those three should be at the very bottom of 855 pages. And I think there might be one or two.
Timber sales.
Timber sales, yes. There's one or two kind of sprinkled at the bottom of each of the series, whatever they'd be assigned to. Like, timber sales was in finance, I think. Yes, at the bottom of finance. So, things where we know where they would go in the series, we put them at the bottom, and they're to be determined, whatever number it is. So I think to be about five that we brought over that NEOLA didn't have.
Okay, that sounds good. That answers my question.
Before we ask content questions, if there are some, this is the resolution that Tim was referring to. You can see, this is what the policy site will look like.
To the public.
To the public, yeah. So typically, it's bylaws, and then all down to the 9,000s. This is that adoption resolution that this particular district chose to include here, along with, you can see that the board, oops, let me go here. The board members in this case chose to, all right, move over here. Stop it. There we go. Chose to sign off on these. So this would be, you know, kind of a cover page, if you will.
Sure.
For the entire policy manual, if that's something the board's interested in doing.
What do you guys think about that?
Does that get updated every time there's an update of policies, or is that just for the first chunk?
I assume it's the first time, correct?
This is the adoption resolution, which is for the big mass.
Okay.
Of adopting everything and rescinding your current, so.
Okay.
It would not be for the updates later.
Okay, okay.
I think it's important that we have that document.
I think it is too.
To be clear to the public, then, what we did.
Who did this?
It is possible to drop that after a number of years have gone by, if you feel that, I mean, if the board is represented by all different players or many different members, that is an option, you can always take that out, all of the other policies, you know, everything is still in effect.
So questions about process? Otherwise, we can move to, if the board members have content questions or suggestions? Anything else, Tim, as far as process or?
I don't think so with the policy. I mean, you are getting near the end, near the finish line, so that's going to be exciting for you.
On many levels. Does the board have questions on, you know, anything from Monday, or I guess, any policies at this point?
I do. I gave everybody a copy of the current selection of library materials policy, just because there wasn't a counterpart to that in NEOLA. And I felt that this was a really robust, well-done policy. I haven't looked at the appendixes, as far as thinking about how those would, if they're not part of it. I assume that the form, this would be an administrative guideline there? Because that's one of the appendixes, is the form for reconsideration of library materials. I won't ask you to make any decision on this today, because I want people to have a chance to read it, but it really lays out the care and thought that goes into selecting materials for the school district, and what happens if someone objects to a library book, for instance. And I think it gives us cover that we have this really well-thought-out reconsideration process. There is also a policy for selection of instructional material, not library material, that's separate. It's not this robust, it doesn't have this many details in, and I would ask people to think about whether or not we want to make that a little more specific or more robust, because I know that there's a lot of thought that goes into the instructional materials that we use in our school district, too. I think back to when we were talking about the new math adoption, and how the people on that committee did a book study, and they visited other schools, and all of those things. Now, maybe we don't need that in a policy, maybe administration thinks that that's covered by the processes they have. But there's some confidence in knowing that if someone objects to something, here are the steps that we're going to go through, they're logical, they're fair, and we're not going to remove something because of a complaint, we're going to go through this really thoughtful process of reconsideration.
Question, Beth?
Yes.
So we've got the proposed policy for library material, selection of library materials, you said there's also one for instructional materials. Was that a current Wausau policy, or a NEOLA policy you were referring to?
Well, there's two. The Wausau School District one is 6216, and the NEOLA one is 2521. I haven't studied them intensely, but I just thought maybe we should take a look at those before next month. But the thing that this led to was, when we were talking about the complaint process last time, on Monday, the 4th, that's policy 9130. And, you know, we went through these so quickly, that sometimes I just wasn't quick enough. And here's one where we changed something under, on page 829 of this policy, 9130. There's a question that says, "The material in question," and it was listed as "may not be," and we changed it to "may be," "temporarily withdrawn from use pending final resolution of the matter." And I'm not comfortable with that, and it disagrees with our library selection policy. And I realize this might not be in relation to a library book, but I feel like if something is in question, and somebody complains about it, it stays until it goes through the process. I feel like a parent would always have the option to restrict a material from their own child, but not from everyone else in the whole district. That could shut down instruction. And the reason why I gave you a printed copy of the library selection policy is, I felt like it was really very ordered, and here's the process we're going to go through. And if you've ever been through something like that, where someone objects to a certain material for a reason, there are lots of emotions involved, and a community can really get caught up in that. And I think having the protection of a really good policy that lays things out properly, and also gives, I wouldn't want to be the principal that is getting a complaint from a parent, and it rests with me to make the decision. I would want that cover of, you know, here, here's the form you fill out, did you read the material in its entirety, here's the process we're going to go through, and you might not even make it through the whole process before somebody, it gets resolved.
I thought we were talking about not, not a book in the library, but rather, actual materials being used in the classroom.
But I feel the same about that. I think we are talking about materials in this classroom.
Yeah, so that one, I disagree with you on, only because if, if somebody presents something to a classroom, and if the principal, and the superintendent, and everybody thinks this is not appropriate for you to be showing this to these second graders, it shouldn't stay in that second grade classroom until we have a board meeting. If it's something, I mean, think of just, you know, think of the worst thing you can think of, something just outlandish, that, there has to be some ability to say, well, wait a minute, we're going to, I can use this in that classroom, right now, we've got to look into this.
If it was protected by the material selection policy, and it went through that proper procedure, if somebody just went down to family video, and brought in a video, that's different.
But that's what I'm saying, I don't, try to get them wrong, but I'm assuming not every single thing that a teacher presents to their class has gone through some sort of process like that. They may just have a book that they think is a...
Couldn't the language be adjusted to reflect that? That if it has gone through this process, and someone objects down the road, then it's going to stay until we go through the reconsideration process. However, some, for lack of a better word, rogue piece of instructional material is brought in that hasn't gotten through the process, then there is the ability to pull that until a proper review can be done.
See, I would be comfortable with that.
Well, that's essentially what it's saying in F, right? The material in question may be temporarily withdrawn from use pending final resolution of the matter, may be withdrawn.
I thought "may" was, "may" gave us the option.
Gives us, right.
And we can have the exception to, whatever this policy is assigned, that anything that falls within this policy, that policy isn't, they're separate and distinct, so we can make that clear.
I feel like that guidelines for matters regarding instructional materials, I think should be referred back to the two selection policies, the one for instructional and the one for library materials. And it shouldn't be part of this complaint policy, because then you've got things in two different places that might not agree with each other, you know what I'm saying?
And I think if something is so egregious, that it shouldn't be shown, then we're talking about possibly a disciplinary matter. I mean, what could be?
And until that's resolved, the policy, if it wasn't changed, would say, it doesn't make a difference, you can't take it out.
Well, I just think this whole part at the end here, starting with guidelines for matters regarding instructional materials, shouldn't even be part of 9130. I feel like that should be part of the material selection policy, for either instructional materials or library materials, and in those policies, you could thief those up to say, if it's something somebody brought in on their own, and it's not part of the curriculum, then a principal could remove it, make a decision to remove it, until...
Because that still gives the teachers broad discretion on what they can bring in.
And they're professionals, they should know.
Exactly, that's, I don't want to restrict that, just in case of one, you know, so as long as, I'd be fine with that, as long as it still supports that ability to...
Is there anybody else that feels like these guidelines for matters regarding instructional materials is, like, repeating what's already in these other policies, and maybe we should refer back to the other two policies instead?
Well, you can either make a reference back to them, or, because if a member of the public has a concern, it'd be really good for them to be able to find everything in one place. And it's just a matter of us making sure that all the policies are consistent with each other, but I don't think we want to send a member of the public looking at two, three, four different policies, depending on what they're, what they're trying to go after.
So in this instance, if a parent had a question about something that was being presented in their classroom, they would follow what policy? Rangy?
9130, I would assume is where they would start, they'd do a word search, and I assume that's where it would take them.
Yeah, remember, these are searchable, right? So if a parent has a question, that's a really nice feature, they could just put in, if they have a complaint or instructional materials, it'll pull up everything that has to do with that, with that topic.
So, just, I think this is definitely critical, that we have this, because of the amount of thought that goes into this process. But my question is, if we can format it, so that it looks like the other policies? Because when we bring in our own policies, they look very distinct with the bullet points, they don't have the clear A, B, C headings, but just so that it conforms to the rest of the policies.
I don't know if this should go to Keith or directly to Paul, but, you know, there's a great variety in instructional materials. There's like, the textbook adoptions that we do, that go through a long process, and we would be very unlikely to remove anything that anybody had objection to after that process. There's also the things the teachers just choose on the fly the hour before the lesson, and that, that freedom has to be there, because otherwise, they just can't operate it at maximum efficiency. So do you, do you think that we need different procedures, or some, or some note of that distinction, as we, you know, as we put this forward, so that people understand that, you know, if it's something like a textbook adoption, they're not likely to get, make any headway until it goes like, all the way to the board? But if it's just something a teacher chooses, and it seems to be a problem, that's, you know, that we're not entirely behind that selection, then it can be very quickly resolved. And there might be some, some need for making that distinction in the policies. Does that make sense to you?
So a distinction of supplementary material versus?
Versus, right, whatever we call the other.
Core material.
Core material.
And since we have more time, I guess I'd like to have input from the librarians, or the on formatting, or the secondary education people and elementary education people. What would you recommend that gives you cover, and it doesn't mean somebody can walk in, complain about something, and get it pulled off the shelf, or pulled out of the classroom on a whim? I mean, you guys have dealt with this.
Well, not on a whim, but just to avoid trouble, because that happens. I mean, not necessarily here, but...
Right. Right.
But it does happen to make a place, so you'd be fine to fix just to get past the problems. We don't want that happening either.
That gives principals cover. I wouldn't want to be the principal who's, make a decision when somebody's complaining.
If it's that controversial, I would, I would think that the principal would be talking with the director of secondary education or someone else in the leadership team. And if, and if there was a, I can see a situation potentially, I doubt that it would happen, but potentially where there's a huge, a larger reaction where it would be reasonable to say, we're going to review this and we're going to hold it temporarily. A temporary hold wouldn't necessarily mean that we're going to take it off forever, it 'd just mean that we're going to review it and...
Turn the heat down a little bit.
That's right.
So what are we asking for? I guess I'm still, I'm confused on, so this is our current library selection stuff.
And that is incorporated, where is it, Cassie?
In the...
Oh, at the bottom, yeah.
It sounds like we're asking for different formatting on that.
Yeah. And I just checked, Neola can do the formatting.
Okay.
If we just ask them to do that.
Okay.
So they can bring out fonts and whatever.
So let's assume, all right, so 6215 gets put in with a number in the right format.
Yep.
So then what, are we missing something else, Beth? Are you suggesting we add something?
I would like administration to have a chance to look at policy 9130 and to see how it would dovetail nicely with that one, if it was a library material, and also to have a chance to look at the instructional materials policy, which is 2521. To just make sure these all agree with each other and see what you think is best and come back with recommendation for next month. Does that make sense?
We can certainly do that. We have reviewed those, and you'll see a lot of the, a lot of the recommendations in there were made by someone in the Ed department or maybe it was a team effort. And it would be the same with 2521. So the, the one thing that was changed in 9130 was going from "may not be removed" to[776.32][776.32]"may be removed." And that was a conversation we had on, at the fourth, on the workshop. Is that the one?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. And we, and we brought back section G, which was about, oh, the feedback loop. You had mentioned that we, hey, there's no directive in here to go back to the person filing the complaint or the question. So G was a, yes, we will get back to them within, I think, 15 days or something.
Okay.
But so, like, if they object to material use in the classroom, does it go through that rigorous process of review like the library book process?
Right. It would be the 9130 process, whatever is there for instructional materials.
Is that one A?
I don't see that one outlined.
Correct.
Correct.
He's got, you know, the first level, second level, third level, that.
Yeah. Is that what you're referring to, Beth?
Yeah. I guess I'm not so sure that that is the same process used for a library book. Should it be? I don't know, but...
We can go back and take a look. See, look, take a look at those three policies and make sure they all work, that they're consistent and work well together.
Yeah, that's what I...
It would make some sense to not have the exact same procedure for a book that is in the library available for use versus a material that's actually required to be used in the classroom like you're in, you're in the captured audience classroom.
I agree.
You know, I think it's two different things.
For that reason and also the vetting process is different.
Right.
Yeah, the incidents that make the headlines that I can remember are those...
In the classroom.
Where you're reading a book aloud to a group and they don't really have a choice.
So can, can we just, for clarity, have in 9130 just a clear line that says, "Library selection policy and reconsideration shall be governed by policy whatever it's assigned?" That way it's clear that it's distinct, it's, it's a different process, it's not within this one?
Yes, once we get that policy number.
Okay. That work?
Yep. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Where to from hearing these?
Are there other questions about any other policy drafts?
Well, I still have concerns about the voting one. And I, it's just like I sent to you, how many people can call in? How many can we set up for? And you told me four. So we can have up to four people gone?
Right. Technology would allow for up to four people to be on a, up to four board members to call in.
And then the other thing was when the president is gone and calling in, they're not going to be running the meeting because it would be too difficult via telephone. So we have to have, and I think this stuff needs to be spelled out.
Do you know which policy that was, Jane?
It's, yeah, it's easy with the definitions.
Zero what?
Zero, 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 one.
The new one.
Okay. That's the first one. Okay. And the other one that I have issue with that I haven't even brought up because I know I'm the only one on the board that feels that way is the one about the drills we put our students through. And that's why I wouldn't be able to sign that, because I cannot approve that.
You know, going back to the earlier one, Tricia, do you remember what the wording is? We worked through that last year. When the president is absent, is that the term? Then the vice president shall assume the duties.
Yeah, there was a...
Right. And absent means not present, and by phone means not present.
No, because it would count as a quorum.
Now it means present, yeah.
It just makes sense to be present if you're going to run the meeting. So, you know, for PRL, it would be different. So I, I mean, Jane, I appreciate it, but I don't think it's that big of a concern. I just, for purposes of people in the room, common sense would seem to dictate that somebody should be present. If you're on the phone, you can't gauge what's happening in the room and see, is this the time I can pipe in?
Of course, I, I understand that, but I feel that way about everybody calling in. But I think it just should be spelled out so that it's clear that we've thought about it and we understand that that's the way to be.
Do you have draft language? Because we could, or, I mean, we have until next month, we can put some clarity in about these concerns.
I don't have anything written out now, no.
Keith, you all could get something written out pretty easily, I would think. It's about one sentence. But you're, that if you're, if you're, if you're attached via media, you're, you're, you're present for purposes of quorum and voting, but not for...
Cheering the meeting.
For cheering the meeting.
Simple.
Yeah. Yeah, I just have to determine if it goes into the voting or if it's a separate location, but we could find an appropriate location for that.
Do we have to have like a lone survivor clause, too?
Perhaps.
So, so we can address that.
Down in the basement.
Yeah, exactly.
We can address that. Now, Jane, when you talk about drills, that, are you referring to the active shooter drills? Okay, so I, I take a bit of issue with you saying that you're the only one with concerns. I've documented my concerns as well and even considered, you know, what I want my son to participate in at school. So there certainly are concerns. What, what is the concern that you have with policy?
I, I think we can cover the legal necessity, because now there's a law that we have to have drills. And we have, we have fire drills which take our students out of the building. And I think we make a mistake by just doing it the same way every time. I think we should have people that occasionally go into the building and say to the kids coming down the hall, you can't come this way, there's a fire this way, and the teachers have to take them out a different way. And the other one is we have for sheltering in places for tornadoes. And with that one, we can say to the kids, well, the tornado is coming from that direction, we have to move to a different room. That covers the scenarios for active shooter, getting them out of the building and moving to a different place. We don't need to traumatize them with the whole shooter drill because kids do get traumatized. My doctor said her, her daughter was horribly upset after the WASSA West one, the first one.
Is there a policy that's directing, what policy is that?
The first two points to me, and I, I agree with what you're saying, right? But to me, that's an implementation of, of that policy. There's, there's a fire drill. Well, I'm going to rely, if it's me, I'm going to rely on the experts who are going to say, this is how you should administer a fire drill. Here's the different scenarios you should throw out there. So to me, I don't know that that's a policy issue so much as it, how are you guys going to implement it?
But there is, we do have a policy in here, and I don't have the number because there's a lot of them. Is that we're required by law to have these drills where we drill kids in how to get out of the building and how to shelter in place. And we have those covered, and we would save time and, I mean, classroom time if we just made sure that we covered everything in those two drills that we already have.
So what's in the policy, though, that's objectionable as opposed to how the practice?
It's that we're having drills and we're calling them. I don't think we call them active shooter drills, do we?
No.
What, what's the... And we do do at the fire department, they come in and have them go out different ways. We do all of those things.
Oh, because I've never, never seen that. And that must be fairly new that they're doing that, then. Which is good.
Yeah, and I guess from a, if the policy related to active shooters is...
We don't have a policy for active shooters.
Yeah, that's, I was trying to recall.
It's school safety.
This is the only one that we address that, you know, school safety. It's the only one I can think of.
Me as well. Because it's, I mean, it says that, that a plan will be developed. So it sounds more like you have an objection to what the actual plan is as opposed to what the policy says.
Yeah, and I guess, so the, the question, Jane, I guess that you have is, do we need a separate exercise devoted to a shooter, surveillance, versus a fire and/or a tornado?
Yes.
Is that, okay. And I...
The kids should not be involved in thinking about someone coming into the building and shooting at them.
Well, and I, I got to disagree on that because...
It's reality.
Yeah, I mean, like it or not.
They're more likely to get hit by lightning. I mean, that's how actual danger is.
I, I understand that, but then the question would be that why do we do a fire drill, right? They're more likely to get hit by lightning. When's the last time a school fire?
But I'm saying we already do those drills. Let's just keep it to the two drills that we have because they will cover everything.
But it still takes me back to this policy doesn't require anything other than the creation of a plan. So it sounds like that's a different discussion.
Yes.
Separate from adopting the policy, the, this policy doesn't require...
So, so I guess you're either asking for the board to approve the plan or you're asking for another policy to set limitations on the plan.
If I, Mike, can you speak to, what are our requirements for those?
Act 143 requires schools to conduct at least one annual drill in the proper response to a school violence event and submit a brief written summary which you guys will hand out at the end of this month from all of our schools. And I was at the WASSA West drill. I've been at all of them and at no point, they're just discussions. There's no drill happening where they're running or there's crazy traumatic things happening. It's literally a discussion in their classrooms. There have been a couple where they've evacuated, but it's done, it's not like run for your lives. It's...
It's not role playing and sound effects.
The trauma comes in, the trauma comes in as, as we're telling kids that this could happen and you have to, you have to respond in this way and you have to, and they shouldn't, they shouldn't even be discussing it.
But isn't that what we're telling them with a fire drill? This could happen to you? You could, the building could get hit by a tornado? To me, we're trying to prepare them not just physically, where do you exit the building, but also mentally. And it's unfortunate. I, I, I feel bad for your physician's child who was impacted by that. But frankly, I, if there were 13 other, 1,300 other students that benefited from it, I'm not inclined to see...
So it's okay to give some kids PTSD?
If, if the impact of preparing an entire school for an event like that is that a child walks out of there with PTSD, but you have 1,300 who are more prepared, yeah, I think that's a decision I would make.
But there...
Well, and that's, that's an extreme sort of example. PTSD is a little more profound than, than a kid being upset because this is a fact of life. We just had a shooting at the cemetery about two years ago. We had a shooting in a law office. These things happen with increasing frequency. We, the, the kids need to understand that this is a part of life and we're going to have to learn to deal with it. And I think we have a professional staff that can do it sensitively.
I think there's another side to that, too, and that is that the kids all know about this stuff anyway. I mean, it's, it's public information, it's happening all the time. If they have the sense that there's somebody up there that's concerned about them and they're setting up a program to protect them, to me, that, that's a much more positive thing than to just have a, suddenly have some kind of an episode like the shooting in the law office, this is right in the community where they had to lock down some of the schools and things, and then have people reacting out of terror because they don't know what's going on. It seems to me there's a protective element of saying, this is why we have to protect you so you will have some security. You don't have to worry about it so much.
But we're adults and we can understand that.
So getting back to the policy, the law says that we have to have a plan and we have to submit it. So what is objectionable about a policy that says that we're going to have to have a plan that's submitted?
And a drill.
And a drill. We're legally required, I have to submit that every year before January 1st.
But it doesn't say it has to be a separate drill.
And neither does this policy. So that, that's what, that's, you know, this is a policy meeting about this policy and it has, it's just, you know what I mean? It's not, it's not what the actual plan is. That would be a separate board meeting.
So I'm not hearing any recommendation to alter the policy in any way, so we're going to move on.
Other, other questions about other, otherwise?
The, yeah, the nursing mother one that got sent today. I think the language for support staff got carried over to professional staff.
Thank you.
Probably like that.
And, and it's, I really think it should be two years and not one year of nursing.
It's probably FLSA language, I'm guessing.
But that's just the minimum. We can go beyond that.
Right. I do agree with that.
I agree with that.
We'd do no harm to say two.
Makes sense.
You know the number offhand, is there? Well, it's the one that was the...
Just 3,000.
It just gives people a little more flexibility.
I don't see the number.
Except for money added.
Or teachers.
Oh, right. So it's a 41...
It was 4430.05.
Right.
And I'm assuming it's going to be assigned the same number except to 3,000.
Do you happen to know that? So we have a 4430.05 that we want to apply to professional staff. Will it have the 3430.05? It may have a different number.
It may. I, I can't say. We have to put a TBD on it.
Okay. But I'm hearing a recommendation to, to extend these to two years.
That's fine.
Yeah, or, I mean, I'm sure, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
When this is all said and done, will we be able to search these, type in a word and it'll bring it?
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's easy to find stuff. I've tried it with the wrist and I can find stuff right away.
Yes.
All right. Anything else on these?
So we'll bring them back. They'll be old business at the Ed Ops. They'll be, and then we'll go for approval on December 9th if the board is ready.
Okay.
So we don't need any action on these, on the whole?
We'll bring them all back to, yes, to the December 9th.
Okay. So we'll defer this until December 3?
We want to move, if we want to move them forward.
Oh, we have to have a motion to move them forward to December 9th.
No, 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 to the, well, to the full board, to that meeting, we need a motion. We don't, it's, you know, we're, we're agendized for a motion to move it to the full board.
Yes.
I don't think we need a motion to move it, to keep it within this committee unless you want a motion table.
No, this is moved to the full board for December 9th.
Okay. So we're ready to go full board? Okay, then we do.
Doesn't mean we can't make edits, but yeah.
We've got a month to...
Right.
All right. Okay, then I will ask for a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the Neola policies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.